A regular school board meeting, March tenth, two thousand twenty-five. Calling this meeting to order, roll call. All members are here. Maybe have a moment of silence, please. Would you stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we're going to open the budget public hearing for comments on the budget. Are there any people in attendance that wish to make comments on the public forum here for our budget? Don't everybody rush up at once. All right, hearing none, I will close the public hearing for the budget and move on to the adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt today's agenda?
I move that we adopt the agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, is there any discussion on it? Hearing none, we will vote. All those in favor of tonight's agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we are up to presentations and recognitions. First one will be the Virginia High School League State Swim Recognition by CCHS with Sarah Mahoney.
Hello, okay. I know a little bit about doing this because I was here last year with Sam. Thank you for having us. My name is Sarah Mahoney. I am the head coach for the Culpeper County High School Swim Team. And we are here, and I want to thank you guys for taking some time today to recognize one of our swimmers for his achievements and his dedication and effort this year and for his four years at Culpeper County High School Swim Team. We're here especially to honor him for his top finish at the Virginia High School Swim Championships that just happened last week. He had his best finish and his personal best time in a hundred freestyle. He also swam a hundred backstroke with a personal best time finishing in eleventh. I wanted to say, I know that he would want to thank his fellow athletes, his teammates, his coaches, his teachers who supported him all of course over the past four years, Dr. Soderholm, for supporting him and making this possible. And I know that we would all like to say thank you to him for putting our team kind of back on the map, as it were. I've been seeing a little bit of digging in the record books and it's been about ten years since anyone had made it this far in the state level at Culpeper High School, as Sam has done. This year, he had two district champion, he was, two events he was district champion. One event, he was regional champion and had a third place. And then his high finishes at states. He has attended states for the last three years. This is his highest finish and his personal best time. And he's also the first person in Culpeper High School within at least the last ten years to take his swimming to the next level. He will be going to swim in college at the University of Mary Washington, where I know he will make our county just as proud as he's, as he can. So, thank you so much for having us and congratulations to Sam.
Now we recognize the Virginia High School League State Wrestling. Sponsor is Ty Foster from CCHS.
My name is Ty Foster and I am the head wrestling coach here at Culpeper County High School. This year, I had the honor of coaching an absolutely tremendous group of student athletes. I am extremely proud to be here tonight to be able to recognize a few of the standout members of the amazing and impressive team that we had. Wrestling's a tough sport. A lot of work is put in through the cold and dark winter months, oftentimes in a stuffy, humid room that, let's be honest, never smells too good. It's oftentimes lonely, training on your own, or just with a very few other teammates. You don't have special gear, a ball, a stick, a racket. You have just yourself, your attitude, and your effort. And I think that makes it all the more special. The individuals we get to recognize tonight have a special work ethic and a positive attitude about challenges that they face. In wrestling, the equation is very simple. What you put in is what you get out. These student athletes have put so much into themselves and it comes to light through the sport of wrestling. Jax Ing was our one hundred and twenty-six pound wrestler this year. Last year, he was a district champion. He placed fourth at regionals and sixth in the state. He had a tremendous year this year, making improvements by making the finals of the King of the Rock Tournament, placing third at regionals, and placing fourth in the state tournament. Ibrahim Dashar was our one hundred and thirty-eight pound wrestler. Last year, he had quite a year. He was district champion, third in the region, but he fell short of placing at states. This year, he fixed that. He was a district champion again. He was a regional finalist this year, taking second, and achieved a sixth place in the state tournament this year.
Riley Vineyard was our one hundred and ninety pound wrestler this year.
He was up from one sixty-five last year. We got him to not lose so much weight. Last year, he made the district and regional finals, but had to forfeit in both matches due to a medical injury. His injury stuck with him at states last year and he wasn't able to place. This year, Riley fixed all of those things. He was a district champion, a regional champion, made it all the way to the state finals, getting a second place finish in the state tournament this year.
All three of these wrestlers deserve all of the accolades that they get.
They are tremendous young men. They are tremendous student athletes, doing well in school, doing well on and off the mat. I'm super excited to be able to get all three of these guys back next year and continue to improve on the things that we've built this year. I absolutely look forward to what they have to offer to this world, both on and off the mat. They are tremendous young men and I am proud to stand in their corner. Thank you very much. And Coach Deborah, our girls' coach, is going to say a little bit about our female wrestler, Allison.
Good evening, my name is Deborah. I'm the girls' head coach for wrestling at CC. We have been so fortunate to have Ms. Allison in our room the past two years, as she started out as a junior. And so, this is only her second year wrestling. In our first ever zone qualifiers that we had this year, she placed second in our zone. And only the top four from each zone got to go and qualified to go to states. Through pain, sweat, and tears, Allison worked her butt off on the mat at states, wrestling some of the hardest competitions that she's seen all year. She's put in lots of time and effort to really excel at the sport, between time in the wrestling room, time waiting for matches, and six minutes per match to get out there and just leave everything that she had on the mat. She excelled every single time. But beyond her wrestling abilities, this girl has one of the most golden hearts you'll ever find. She cares about the people around her. And she also has been in multiple sports, making her an all-around fantastic athlete. We're going to miss seeing her in the wrestling room next year, but we know that whatever she chooses to do, she's going to excel and kick butt at it.
Now, we will have the state indoor track, sponsored by Larry Kilby and Brent Hardle from Eastern View High School.
Thank you guys for having us here. Truly, truly a blessing coaching this group of young men that finally made it to the last finale, our state meet. We have Darian Diamond. He was, he is the regional champion, three-time regional champion, three years in a row. He finished fourth in the fifty-five meter hurdles and is a, is our school record holder at a seven point seven-three. Super, super amazing young man. Look forward to seeing what he does after, after high school, running collegiately. And then we have our Mark Lee. We have, he was, he went, he was a part of the four-by-four, five-by, four-by-four regional champion team. He actually was a regional champion in the long jump state qualifier as well with the twenty-one foot jump. Super amazing. Then we have, and then our four-by-four regional championship team with Dylan Jenkins, Emir Jackson, Isaiah, and then, who else is not here? Come on. And then Elijah, Elijah Bland, he was with us as well. This group, just to say something about indoor, ninety-plus percent of our season was, was, was canceled or manipulated in some way, shape, or form due to Mother Nature. But every single day, these young men and, and the majority of the other kids, they all showed up, never, never giving up, never complaining about the weather, the conditions. They just chose to give their best versions of themselves every day and couldn't be prouder of them. Our, our district meet also was canceled, so we didn't get an opportunity to compete in our, on our districts, on our district side. But when we went to our regional meet, they, they fared well. Our four-by-four, they ended up seventh overall.
At the state.
At our state level.
One in the region.
Number one, number one in the region. Broke the school record again at three minutes, thirty-one seconds. Amazing. I'm looking to see what they do with this outdoor record at three minutes and twenty-six seconds. So, it keeps getting faster and faster. It's also been a pleasure having, having Coach Hardle with me because it makes things so much easier, just being able to help these kids be the best version of themselves.
You got anything, Coles? Not particularly.
All good. Good job, fellas.
At this time, we will have the recognition for the Virginia High School League State Wrestling, the sponsors Chris Taylor at Eastern View High School.
So, once again, thank you for the opportunity. I know everybody's pretty much going to say it tonight, but thank you for the opportunity to recognize these guys. It's so easy to recognize people when they're doing bad things. There's recognition when somebody does something bad, but I appreciate the opportunity to recognize our young folks when they're doing good things. And so, thank you for allowing this opportunity, this moment, to recognize all of our, our Culpeper athletes. The first athlete that Eastern View is going to recognize is going to be a special individual to me. I've been coaching him for many years. I was actually just looking at a photo today, about six years ago, when he was a lot more round, a lot shorter, a lot more cute. All right, not so cute anymore. He's just a handsome young man. But I have appreciated the, the road that this young man has taken. He's, his worth, work ethic is amazing. It's just one thing after another and he keeps on grinding to become better, keeps on pushing to become better, and it's a, it's a really great attribute. And it's, it's awesome as a coach when you don't have to rev, pump, and prime an athlete. They are self-driven and they're going to go about it and get it done themselves. So, Michael Byrne, district champ, regional champ, and state champ. I was talking to his dad the other day and his, we were having a discussion and he said, "You realize that Michael went all the way through the state tournament and didn't even have a single point scored on him?" I was like, "Yeah." It's amazing, it's amazing feat. So, hats off again to you, Michael Byrne, keep on going. Michael, Michael is a junior, so we get him back next year and I'm excited to see what the future, future brings. Yeah. So, this next athlete, also a guy that I've been around for a long time, coaching through the, the youth league and I've seen his ups and downs and we've had some really great times. More of the comedian, and I've enjoyed so many jokes. He was just joking on me over there, matter of fact. Says, "Coach, you're oily." It's like, "Yeah, I know, man." Just comes with it, just comes with it. Yeah, so, but yeah, so this year, district, district champ, right, second, second at regionals, and then he was able to come in at sixth at state. I am looking forward to great improvement from him next year. He is truly capable of great things, so look forward to seeing this guy's future next year only go up, Declan McHarden.
At this time, if any of the student athletes wish to leave, we still have people in the hallway. You're welcome to stay, but we're doing our teacher recognition next. So, anyone that...
Good evening, Dr. Brad, and members of the board. It's my pleasure this evening to present to you a recognition for some employees who have been here for thirty years or more tonight. So, it's a great honor for us to recognize them. As a division, CCPS recognizes all employees in five-year increments with a certificate and a gift of appreciation. So, we want to, this year, recognize some of our most dedicated staff. So, we have two employees this evening who have thirty years of experience this year, starting with Pearl Sample, grade-three teacher, Ms. Susan Sisk. If you'll come up, Dr. Brad has your certificate, also has your gift from us. And if you'll stand for a picture and then come over here so Mrs. Hoover can get a group photo. Right over here. Thank you, Susan. Next, we have Ms. Carrie Lane. Carrie is currently our director of our ESL and Family Resource Center, so she has a big job. So, we are so happy she is here with us tonight. We now have three employees who have thirty-five years of service tonight, starting with Sarah, better known as Beth Henderson. She is an administrative assistant at Farmington Elementary School. Beth? Mr. Glick couldn't be here tonight, he's recruiting, but he wanted to make sure we take good care of her. All right, next we have Ms. Pam Gatewood. Pam is currently serving as our assistant principal at Floyd T. Benz Middle School. I've had the pleasure of working with Pam since my first year in Culpeper, many years ago. Kim is one of our school counselors who takes excellent care of our students at Culpeper County High School. Congratulations. And before we take a photo, I do want to recognize an employee who was with us for forty years. Unfortunately, he is not here this evening. He passed away in February. James Smith III, better known as Bo, from our maintenance crew. Everybody knew Bo. He was everywhere, all the time, and he was just a great person to be around. So, we just wanted to honor him this evening. It was his fortieth year in the division. I know he was also a graduate of Culpeper County High School, so just in remembrance, we want to say thank you.
The principal's report will be given by Dr. Soderholm this evening on CCHS.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Please excuse my voice. It didn't show up, but my students did, as well as a staff member. We're excited to be able to tell you some of the great things that are happening at Culpeper County High School.
Just pause for a second.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead.
Man, I brought some of my students with me to tell you some of the great things that are happening at CCHS. One of the things that, and also Ms. Sherry Mills, one of our teachers. And one of the things I really want you to notice is that our students have the power to impact their community. They can make positive changes. And they're going to tell you about some of the changes that they've made at CCHS.
My name is Ella Brooks. I'm a senior this year and also Morgan, our school's Morgan's Message president. A little bit about Morgan's Message. Morgan's Message is a nonprofit organization started in 2020, just a year after Morgan Rogers committed suicide after enduring a heartbreaking knee injury, which stopped her lacrosse career at Duke University, essentially crushing her life's dream to play professionally. We strive to eliminate the stigma and normalize the conversations surrounding mental health in the student-athlete community. To spread awareness, we host sports dedication games, fundraisers, like hosting a pickleball tournament and a volleyball powder puff game. And we even had a, had the privilege to, of teaching a, a learning lab at the SCA Regional Convention a couple of weeks ago. We met new people and even talked with other schools about starting a Morgan's Message Club at their school. This is such an important discussion nowadays because so many people in our community struggle with mental health and suicidal thoughts. So, we are pushing this topic to reach those in need and we aim to let everyone know who is struggling that they are not alone and that there's always someone willing to listen. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Michael Wilson Johnson and I am in eleventh grade. Play Memphis League basketball team.
Hi, my name is Kelly Hutcheson. I'm in the twelfth grade and I also play in Memphis Basketball League, too. Memphis, Memphis League is a unified sport team with disabled and non-disabled students. Now, I know Michael's favorite part in Memphis League was helping his team out against one of our biggest rivals with his kettle run, when all of the people in the gym were chanting that "We want Michael." He likes playing basketball at school and he also plays basketball in the Special Olympics, Olympics, and won in the bronze medal. Well, I'm a thousand-point scorer for our girls varsity basketball team and I love having the team experience in the Memphis League basketball team, too. Having the whole student body in the gym cheering, the cheerleaders, the pep band, and the live, live national anthem, it's fun, it's cool, and it's hype, and it's the best thing we can do at CCHS.
I'm Ariana Lambert, a sophomore at Culpeper County High School. At our school, we try to create a diverse and culturally inclusive environment where every student is recognized and feels like they belong. This year, we took a field trip to Howard University, the African Smithsonian, and the U.S. Capitol. My favorite part of the trip was the tour of the U.S. Capitol. Our tour guide told the best stories ever. We even learned to step in the African-American museum. This year, we also hosted a George Washington Carver Alumni Night at our school. I was able to greet the alumni and hear their stories.
All right, during the season, we're able to have a tribute game for Carver High School, where I was able to wear a replica jersey of my grandparents' school and was able to see my grandfather, Lawrence Hutcheson, celebrate his national, state championship. There you go.
We also celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month with an assembly, foreign exchange student presentations with information about their countries, art displays of Native Americans, Asians, and Pacific Islanders, and a Black History Month assembly. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jason Arias. I'm a junior at CCHS. My SCA was given the opportunity to host the SCA Regional Workshop. We were given this opportunity because I am the state regional representative for all Northern Virginia schools. We hosted one hundred and fifty students from twelve schools and they all attended, they all attended our conference where we taught other schools how to utilize student leadership. We had a guest speaker, Jan Thielen, breakout rooms led by students, Culpeper students like Ella and Morgan's Message, lunch in a pep rally. It was a great way to show off our school, teach others what we do, and get ideas from other schools. This is a picture of the CCHS students who planned the events and led every breakout session. So, shout out to Ms. Hyde, our, our SCA sponsor, so she helped me out, big help, so, thank you.
Hi, I'm Sherry Mills. I am a dual-endorsed in English and Special Education. So, daily, I work with students who are below grade level in reading... So, daily, I work with students who are below grade level in reading or writing, and I also work with our at-risk seniors. I'd like to tell you about one of my favorite things at CCHS, which is our BDP breakfast. So, throughout the school year, every single staff member and faculty member in our building gets to choose a student to invite to a special breakfast, where Dr. Soderholm makes pancakes and bacon for everybody. It's a really nice way to just sit with the students and chat with them before school. There's a variety of reasons why we might pick a student for this honor. Maybe they are our leader on the ball field, maybe they are crushing it in math class, or maybe you have watched them make a million tiny steps toward a bigger goal. So, as a personal example, I have a student that came to me freshman year, and he sat down across from me and said, "Mrs. Mills, I want to be the first person in my family to graduate from high school." And he's been working really hard toward that goal, so on Wednesday, he's going to come to breakfast with me. And in May, he is going to get his high school diploma and walk across the stage. So, I'm obviously really biased. I think being a high school teacher is one of the best jobs in the world. We get to be in the trenches with our students as they are making these big life goals, whether that is graduating high school, or preparing for college, or figuring out a career path, or even just how to make better choices in their day-to-day life. And it's such an amazing thing to get to see our students have these successes build as they go. And so, I think having this special breakfast is such a wonderful way for us to say, "Hey, I see what you're doing, acknowledge your accomplishments, and just say, 'I'm really, really proud of you.'"
Good evening, my name is Jonathan Johnson, I'm a senior at Culpeper County High School. Last semester, I had the opportunity to work in our school's Chromebook Service Center. The Service Center is housed in our makers' base where we set up and repair our students' Chromebooks. We also design and produce t-shirts for our school and others. These activities also provide high-quality work-based learning. My favorite part of working in the Service Center was preparing all the yonder pouches for CCHS and satisfying our customers with high-quality merchandise. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Nemias, not Namias, Nehemias, or Nehemias. It's Ne-Mias. My name is mispronounced too many times to count because I want you to remember my name, Nemias. I'm a junior at CCHS, and I'm here to talk about how I reintroduced strawberry milk back in the school. The idea first came up in October, after our first or second wrestling home duel. I had the thought come up after the duel had ended, and I thought to myself, "I could have really used some strawberry milk." Who wouldn't? Like, who wouldn't? I talked to some teammates, and they say they wanted it back as well. After the game, I saw Dr. Soderholm, and I brought up the idea to him. He said he'd consider it, in which I knew he would, because who wouldn't, right? And I didn't just bring it up for me, but for everyone, because we won't be kissed forever or stay young for long. I hope to bring back the taste of strawberry milk. Hold on, give me a moment. Oh, yeah. Because I used to drink it a lot as a kid, and as well as bringing back lost, happy memories. Next month was a home tournament, and I had won my match. After the match, I saw Dr. Soderholm, all sweaty. I probably dropped a couple of sweats on him, I apologize. All right. Oh, and his response was, "I've already talked to some people, and they'll be coming up in this week." Later, strawberry milk started showing up on the shelves, and practically every table has strawberry milk. It's funny to me that even little things can make a big impact when you thought it wouldn't. Also, if you're drinking strawberry milk, it's because of me, I'm not bragging, all right? But I'm just saying, but am I wrong? No, not wrong. And this is my time.
I think when students and teachers have the opportunity to have a voice in their school, they look forward to going to school, it's fun. Whether you're doing something that's life-changing, like Morgan's Message, or somewhere in between, you have an opportunity to be a leader, to celebrate who you are and your family, or you're just bringing back everybody's favorite lunchtime beverage. It makes a difference when you can be heard and seen in school. And we're glad to have these students who make our school better every day. We're happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Anyone have any comments?
So, I have a bone to pick with you. That was emotional, that was hard to listen to, and it was really, really impressive. And what, just the spirit and the respect of these students and the obvious relationship you have with them and with all your students, just wow. Thank you. It was a really special presentation.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'd just like to add, thank you, Dr. Soderholm, for allowing the students to have a voice. And I love that they're using it in such a positive and productive manner. And I have to just make a note that my brother absolutely loved strawberry milk, and I was wondering, what happened to it? Thank you for bringing that back.
All right, anybody else?
Having been a Blue Devil for eighteen years, I can really appreciate all the things that you all are doing and the environment that you've created. And you really are just great examples of Blue Devil pride and reaching out to the community and everyone working together. So, thank you for the presentation and sharing that tonight.
All right, Dr. Bradz.
I usually don't comment, but this was an almost perfect presentation. Almost perfect. What's this presentation lacking? Strawberry milk. Now, I'm craving strawberry milk. Catch you later, thank you.
I'm thinking of bringing back the two-for-one-dollar cookies. But that's a whole different story now.
Understood, thank you.
All right, everybody good? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this time, are there any requests to speak? Nobody? All right. Consent agenda. The consent agenda includes approval of the minutes, February tenth and twenty-fourth, and payroll and payment of bills. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Ms. Brown? I make a motion that we accept the consent approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seven-oh. All right, we are down to action items. And presentation approval of the operating budget. It says presentation slash approval. Doesn't mean asked to.
Yes, ma'am, but this is an intention for an approval this evening. All right, okay. We'll jump into this, and we have some adjustments from our last meeting at our work session on the twenty-fourth. And I'm just going to jump through here quickly and be happy to answer any questions you may have. The agenda is slightly revised because it includes some items near the end of the presentation with respect to proposed expenditures and revenues. The story that I want to tell is this story accompanied with Mr. Dean and myself, our Executive Director of Finance, attending numerous meetings of the Board of Supervisors here lately, to include CIP meetings and work sessions on the budget, hearing the discussion about tax reassessment and the value of what that tax increase may be, equalization, and all sorts of demands and requests from other departments. So, we knew where we stood in terms of our first blush with the work session in February. So, on this screen, you see something that's unusual for this timeframe. It is March, and we actually received a calculation tool to pin down our numbers from the Conferies Budget. For everyone, that means that the assigned individuals from the Senate, the Virginia Senate and the House of Delegates, after they rejected each other's budgets, then they came together and came up with a compromised budget. I think that's a very effective term in this parlance. So, they came up with that budget, and we have what I would say would be single-figure distribution sheet estimates of where we might be, and we go with that. We go with that as a planning tool. Well, Thursday evening late, this past Thursday, after we had our work session, we actually did receive a Calc tool that specified what the funding may look like in the Conferies Budget. And remember, the Conferies Budget will likely be approved by the General Assembly, but it has to be approved by the Governor as well. And the Governor has line of veto to include but not limit to the budget items. So, that said, long story short, if you see that, new Calc tool was released on three-sixths, so that's fresh. And the good news from the Conferies is that the increase over FY twenty-five is just over four-point-two million dollars. That's the good news, we can drill down and we see that number. The bad news, the bad news is from our last presentation, that was about a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars lower than what we were using as an estimate. Remember, at this time of year, it's estimate. So, after our experiences in visiting and learning from the county, we felt very strongly that we had to go back as staff and Finance Department, myself, and department heads, that we had to take a look at what we had recently proposed and try to adjust for this increase because we really didn't feel that the seven-hundred-and-ninety-eight thousand dollars that we were short fall on our budget presentation and the last presentation in February, that just simply asking for another hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars was going to be the right approach. So, we worked hard on that, I'm going to hit the highlights of that. So, any questions, let me know. This slide still reigns true, and while I'm in this format of public format, this is to reiterate to our folks, yes, we're going to have a small increase to our health insurance, as you see, almost seventy percent participation, but this is just the share that our employees pay on the premium. It also increases the school board's share of what they pay on the premium. So, this is a premium increase, it's a slight premium increase, whether you are a single subscriber or a family member, depending on your coverage. So, I just want to reiterate, that's just a premium increase. It has no direct correlation to what salary increase may be. So, I would like to say that, and we have said that to our Classified Roundtable, our Parent Roundtable, and our Teacher Roundtable as well, to have those ambassadors out there understanding these are two very different things that happen in our budget process. As we've said in several iterations, we overestimated last year's VRS reduction. In the two-year budget, VRS went down, and we saw that as savings. But we overestimated that savings last year, so we're fixing that overestimate of last year. So, that's why we're calling that the 2025 Adjustment. So, that's one-point-two million dollars, starting from scratch, that we have to cover in the new spending plan. Having said that, let me go back here. One of the bases for the Governor's proposed budget and the Conferies amendments to the budget has baked into it is a recommendation of a three percent salary increase for SOQ and SOQ support positions. And I will always, with the caveat, say that means that's about two-thirds of us. But that's not how we do it. We have that salary increase applied to all of our employees, not just the two-thirds that are quote-unquote SOQ positions. So, I'll say that that's the basis of the three percent that you'll see in just a second. So, going forward, compensation, I'm not going to go through all of these comparisons, but we still receive, as we've told you, employment verifications from localities. We still receive employment verifications, we put them in the comparison list. Doing really well at our starting salary, pretty good in our mid-range and upper range in terms of our increases. This is current year with these comparisons, it is not what other folks are trying to do. In the meetings that I've attended, everybody is fairly focused on the three percent that I mentioned earlier. So, the salary increases, to get to three percent would look like this. Our teacher scale has differentiated steps in the early part of the scale at almost a percent, and then further in the scale with more experience, one-point-six percent. So, we are proposing two-point-two percent on the scale plus the point-eight or the one-point-six. That would guarantee a minimum of three-point-oh-eight increase, so that's a three percent plus increase for all of our teachers. The next group would be an open-range status of our personnel, and that's a three percent flat increase. Classified steps, we have four other groups of employees that are actual on steps, and that would be an increment for growing up the scale, I'll use that terminology. In one scale, it's one-point-five, in another scale, it's one-point-six. So, adding to that scale would be the equivalent of everyone gets at least three percent or the three-point-one percent if it's one-point-six. That's what that is. As you know, we're not saying, even though this is tight, we're not going to increase our stipends for our coaches and our other positions, teacher leadership positions, that are funded based on stipends, and that stipend is based upon, not the teacher compensation, it's based on our beginning teacher pay. So, that's why that's an increase. And if you go back to that increase that you saw from the state here, pushing three million dollars just to make the salary component happen. This is a sample of the several scales, but it's our big group, it's our expensive group of our teacher scale, and it also indicates how many people are on each step in our thirty-five-step scale. You know the drill on that. Unbudgeted this year, we added some positions during the year, as is fairly normal to keep business moving forward. We added these positions from our last iteration, we had eight FTEs here. We've reduced two of those FTEs because two of those positions were still, they were advertised, filled, unfilled, at this point in time vacant. So, we thought, this is a point where we can keep those out of the ask for next year. We'll wait and see if they need to be unbudgeted for FY twenty-six. So, we reduced this from eight FTEs to six FTEs. Going forward, the request out there for positions was four-point-eight positions. We reduced this by one teaching position that we will watch enrollment to see if we need to add it. This was at the high school level for the English enrollment ratio, English classes. That's a class size report that we have to report, that we do with the Virginia Department of Education. We'll keep an eye on that. If that number creeps up, then that would be something, maybe we have to add an FY twenty-six as an unbudgeted add-on. But at this point, in trying to minimize the exposure on new positions, we reduced that by one to three-point-eight FTEs, subsequently reducing that number. These are a number of items and expenditures with respect to instruction and technology to include but not limit to Chromebooks, software, instructional materials, an increase to our Piedmont Regional Educational Program tuition, and also an adjustment to our Governor's School tuition. Not that it's an increase, but this line had been underbudgeted, so we were adjusting that. Other expenses, actually, we're showing this as other expenses, but it's a decrease. We have changed our, as you know, our workers' compensation, property casualty liability insurance company, and saved over two-hundred thousand dollars in that change. We are using a portion of the VPSA grant funds that sits in Richmond to do some of our wireless infrastructure, particularly the wireless access points and Chromebooks. And you'll see this later in the numbers, that this is almost like a self-sustaining fund, that it sits in Richmond, and we intend to spend that on these items, and the revenue will be from the state, so this is not really growing the budget. We're showing where the revenue is to offset that. That is very similar to, whoops, let's see, I clicked one too many, VPSA. All-in Virginia, winding that down this year from the gift that keeps on giving in some complicated ways, actually, of the FY twenty-four funds that were given to us in excess of three million dollars to use in FY twenty-four, FY twenty-five, and coming up in FY twenty-six. So, the negative number there is representing, instead of one-point-eight million in the budget this year, it's one-point-two million in the budget to cover these eight FTEs. We will be having conversations throughout this year, evaluating these positions, how they serve us in the school division to see if, in fact, they need to be included in the FY twenty-seven spending plan. So, but they are covered with the remainder of the All-in Virginia money that is actually in the treasury here in Culpeper, because we received all of that money in FY twenty-four. Again, something we do not desire the Virginia Department of Education to do again. It's been very complicated to do it that way, and have to spread it over multiple fiscal years. You have limited things you can do with that type of funding. So, this is a quick summary of that. The benefits increase, salary increase, unbudgeted, and new FTEs, new positions, instructional and technology expenses, the decrease that we have, VPSA and All-in. VPSA and All-in counter each other. VPSA and All-In counter each other. So the ending story is, after the Calc tool drilling down to our accurate level, reducing a few other items, using our textbook fund that we have here as an enterprise fund, using some of that to offset some of the reduction that we saw in the Calc tool last week, we're still back at 3/4 of a million dollars, but it's actually a bit less than where we ended up at the end of February. So kudos to staff, and particularly Mr. Dean for helping us get to this point, that we have basically reduced the ask of the county or the shortfall after we received the Calc tool that showed that we were going to receive less funding from the state based on the Conferies Calc tool. What does that look like, then, in terms of previous years? From FY '22 to a proposed of FY '26, you can see the county support for Culpeper County Public Schools, $33 million up to $35 million last year. Last year was a small increase. This year, the request is 2.1%, which is less than inflation. So we're very hopeful that the county will see fit to fill this funding gap with that increase, and/or we do not anticipate any additional state funding, based on what we've seen in the Calc tool. As I mentioned, we dealt with that reduction, and again, hopeful that the county will fund that, this additional amount to cover the funding gap in our proposed spending plan. What does that look like in bigger terms? That would be proposed in instruction. You see, I won't read all those to you, but the proposal is for a $124.6 million budget overall. That is a 4.3% increase over last year. The bulk of that increase is coming from the state, and I'll show that to you in revenue. This shows you what the proposed and actual, sorry, actual to proposed cost per pupil is on this page. Sorry, I got ahead of myself. This was the proposed revenue page. You can see the 5.2% increase from the state. We have a county requested increase of 2.1% and how the federal government went up slightly in terms of federal funds. And we also show, both on the revenue side and the expenditure side, where we are with food service in order to have a balanced budget. So included in this document, we have added our 25, excuse me, 26, FY '26 to FY '30. Yes, 2030, five-year spending plan. We've got some big projects going on, obviously with the startup of the Culpeper Middle School renovation, and we're working hard and diligently on Elementary School Number 7, and the county is aware of this and is very much in support of these major capital projects, to include but not limited to having to fund those projects and interest payments upfront. So next step will be this basically presentation with a few more details in terms of what the categories look like in addition to this, but essentially this presentation to the Board of Supervisors this Thursday at 4:30 p.m. At this time, I would be happy to answer any questions. Board members may have, staff, Mr. Dean, and one of our directors, executive directors that are present, happy to answer any questions. And I'll go ahead and say it, if there are no questions, administration recommends approval. Thank you.
All right. Is there any comments from board members? Any questions? Everybody good? We all good? All right, then I will ask if there is a motion.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the fiscal year '26 operating budget as Dr. Brad's presented.
A second.
Second. All right, is there any other discussion? Hearing none, we will vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? 7-0, passed. All right, we will move to the second reading of the Local Educational Agency Parent-Family Engagement Policy. Is there any motion to approve this?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the LIA Parents and Family Engagement Policy, IGVC-DR. Second, the second reading, sorry.
Right. And is there a second for this motion?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Hearing none, we will vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 7-0. All right. We are down to superintendent updates. Do you have any?
Madam Chair, members of the board, I have said enough.
I thought you were gonna go there.
Mr. Dean is next.
All right. Mr. Dean, finance report, please.
Madam Chair, school board members, Dr. Brad's, tonight's finance update begins with our revenue, as usual. So we begin with our revenue. The blue section is our state revenue, which is our largest, it's 65%. Our second largest is our county, as we just talked about, in our budget at 29%, and federal comes in at 3%, so a very small piece is our federal revenue. Drilling into our state revenue, drilling into our state revenue, you can see our budget, once again, we're short on our budget there of 8,340 members. You know, our state revenue is driven by our average daily membership, and so when we budgeted in the beginning of FY '25, we overstated that number. We hit our peak back in December, as I've mentioned before, and ever since then, we are expecting that decline, and it continues to decline. Right now, our deficit is at 89 students, which comes out to $697,000. So again, on a $119 million budget, that's .6 of a percent, or we are at 99.4% of our budget. So knowing that, I would just add, we are looking to offset that shortfall between our federal revenue. We're gonna do a little better with federal. And then Dr. Brad's actually mentioned it in the budget presentation earlier, we did a renewal on our insurance, our PNC insurance and workers' comp, and so definitely received savings from that. So those two items, I think, will offset our deficit for the year, but we still will see this number to come down by year-end, so. Looking at our expenditures, our school operating fund come in at $71.4 million, that's 60% of our budget. That's a little down from last year, so that's good. We're tracking behind on revenue, so we need to be down a little bit. On the food service side, $2.9 million, we're at 63%, so that's running a little higher than last year. So we'll look at that in the next slide. Looking at the monthly school operating expenditure budget, you can see our, we consistently spend 8% to 9% per month. That's been consistent throughout. We have $47.9 million remaining for the year. Again, July and June are a little wacky, and they will look different, but right now, we're showing July at 2%, and that's because of our 10- and 11-month contract employees. Just another view of our monthly expenditures, you can see here, again, very consistent. Looking at last year and this year, we're at 59.8% this year versus 60.8% last year. So again, that's the 1% savings we're seeing right now. Jumping over to our food service, this looks a little different than our school operating. Typically, it's anywhere from 9% to 11% operating on the fully operating months. On the months that we're not operating, it's much, it's lower, and much lower, which makes sense, we're not feeding our kids every day during the week. So we still have 37% remaining, or 1.7 million. And again, switching, looking at the monthly, you can see we are ahead of last year at 62.7% versus 61.7%. So again, I would just mention here, you know, this is the year we've full free breakfast and lunch. Our volumes are up. It's a little wacky of a calculation right now, just because we've had some school closings and delays, but we're running over on our lunches at about 4% and then under on our breakfast at about 5%. So lunches cost more than breakfast, hence we're running ahead, so we're definitely ahead on volume there as well, so. Any questions?
Any board member have any questions, comments? I'd like to say I appreciate your expertise, because I cannot imagine having to dig into all that to know that it's 1% difference from last year on somebody eating food to this year. So I appreciate that type of detail, that someone has it, because it certainly wouldn't be me. So thank you very much.
If I could just get this clicker to work, right? Thank you.
All right, instruction report, Mrs. O'Brien. Fine Arts.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the boards, Dr. Brad's. March is Fine Arts Month, and for that, I'd kind of like to start the presentation with a brief video that kind of shows you some highlights of what we've seen this year so far.
Just saying.
And we're buffering.
This is not my bill.
No.
I was saying, you're buffering.
I hear it everywhere, and I just have to sing along.
I hear it everywhere, and I just have to sing along.
I hear it everywhere, and I just have to sing along.
I live to sing.
I live to sing.
I live to sing.
I live to sing.
With a melody that I sing for you, my voice shines through with color.
Painting every word in a sonic sea.
A world of dreams where you can be.
Just let me be with every note I sing.
With a melody to another place, of time and space we journey.
Going down Chicago line, if the train should jump the track, will I get?
Does she ever say I was walking on horse驮in' sleighs?
Oh, now the best of the party are just happy songs of love.
Oh, you will.
That's where we'll be.
That's where we'll be.
A thrilling chase, a wondrous place for you and me.
Beware my heart is, here are my ghosts, my dreams, my holy shaw.
Bing bing, good morning trees, what a lovely day.
The sun's so big, it hurts my eyes, but really, that's okay.
A man over the rainbow, skies are blue.
And that was just a brief highlight. There's still not even, companies seeing everything that we had covered so far, with still more to go in the next couple of months. I, myself, became a band teacher and went into the world of education because I was inspired by my band teacher, and our fine arts teachers continue to do that every single day. Does it work? There it goes. There was a study done with, between national, between state education systems and quantum research, and they confirmed what we know every day, that students who participate in the arts have lower absentee rates. Why? Because it's a place where they belong. The study showed that a student who attended school and did, attended the arts between ninth, 10th, 11th, and 12th, that their absentee rates were 32% to 50% less than those who don't. Why? Because that's where they want to be. They want to come to school. And then also, part of that project shows kind of, we right now, 72.9% of students participate in the arts. Of course, in elementary school, all of our students get music and art, but in, once they get to middle and high school, they get to divvy that out and choose what they really want to do. Thank you. In elementary school, there's more than just the classes during the day, you know, they get music, they get art, but they also get after-school opportunities. They participate in elementary choir, they participate in musicals, they participate in after-school band, so our teachers go over and beyond. Same with the high school. Yes, they get to choose the specifics they want to do, whether they want to do band or choir or theater, but they also can do marching band or events team or musicals or arts clubs, so their opportunities go on and on. And as you can see from all the accolades, our students do well and are well represented throughout the tri-county, the district, and all states events and assessments, and for that, we're very proud of them. And as we know, as music teachers, we know that not all of our students are gonna become professional musicians or actors or theaters, but what we do hope is that we've created a well-rounded student who has an appreciation for the arts, who develops some of those soft skills that will take them throughout their lives. Here we go, with our young ones, they start young, and as we go through, we'd like to recognize all the invaluable contributions that our fine arts teachers make every single day. One of the soft skills they build is teamwork. I used to tell my students, we are only as strong as our weakest link, and what that means is that I need everyone in that room to come together, because we are only... are only as strong as our, as each group. And so they work together and build that collaborative culture. And also, we build dedication and discipline. Ever watch a rehearsal go on? A director may spend fifteen minutes with one set of students over and over, just hitting that note just right, getting that attack just the way it's supposed to be, because they're striving for that excellence. And it's not something that just occurs. It's gone over and over and over again. So we're building those skills that they can take into their professional lives. And so when we talk about the value of the arts, they make an impact on both our schools and our lives. And I would like to take the time to acknowledge all those students who are on the stage, but also the ones that are behind the stage, the ones that sit there and control our lights and our sound. For them, we are grateful. We also like to thank our community and our school board for their unwavering support, because together, we are supporting the arts. And we'd also like to thank you and appreciate you to come to the art show this Saturday and Sunday and see all of our beautiful kids' artwork. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any comments or questions?
I just wanted to say thank you so much, Mrs. O'Brien, for presenting this. I had the pleasure of interacting with one of your teachers the other day. She saw me walking in Yalmetto Park, and she says, are you coming to the art show? Are you coming to? Of course I am. I cannot wait. I love to see their work.
Yep, it's going to be exciting.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
And I wanted to echo the comments that it's wonderful that we have experiences for students in all the arts at all the grade levels. My high school was grade seven through twelve, all in one building, and that's really where I developed my love of theater. And, you know, I took ballet for twelve years, you would never know it, but I've become a technical theater person and continued that in college. And so you're right, everyone comes to school perhaps for love of teacher or for love of subject, and it's good that kids can get connected to the arts. So thank you for showcasing that for us.
Where they belong. Yep. Thank you. Appreciate it.
The quote that you have on the last slide, that every child is an artist, the rest of that quote is that the problem is how to remain an artist once they become an adult. And that art washes away from the soul, the dust of everyday life. Art is so important, whatever facet of it that we have for so many of our students. And I am extremely grateful for all of the teachers and the parent support there for those students to pursue their dreams and their passion. Again, whether they pursue it as a career or not, is not as important as being able to be, to creatively express themselves in a positive manner. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you very much. We are up to Instruction Report, Career and Technical, Mr. Shawn Summerscales.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Bradz, and members of the school board. It's an honor to be here with you this evening. And just a couple of weeks ago, Laura Hoover sent me a description of an award from the Virginia School Board Association called the Champion for Impact Award. So tonight, I get a dual purpose of being able to give you an update on a program that you so wisely approved about this time last year, as well as a demonstration of what we are going to be submitting on our behalf for this award. The VSBA invited school divisions to submit stories that showcase innovative programs that have transformative effects on schools and their communities. We could think of no better program to represent CCPS as a champion for impact than our very own CTEC firefighter program. Again, just over a year ago, members of this board approved the firefighter course as a new course offering. And since then, it has truly been a community-driven effort to bring this program to life. Thanks to the dedication of our exceptional CTEC fire instructors and the consistent support of the Culpeper Fire Rescue Association, we've overcome numerous challenges and created a program that will have a sustained impact on CCPS students and on our community. The video that you're about to see is a document of a year in the making. It showcases our journey through the incredible videography of Bo Corbin, which you'll see, and with the post-production support of the talented team at Culpeper Media Network. Our hope is that this story stand not just as a celebration of the transformative power of career and technical education, but as a celebration of our Culpeper community. As principal of the Culpeper Technical Education Center, I'm often asked one simple question. What makes Culpeper CTE so successful? It's our community. More specifically, it's the people of our community and the powerful connection they have with our school system.
With the support of the Culpeper County School Board, the administration of the Culpeper Technical Education Center, they completed a comprehensive research to include an instructor for the program, a program manager, what the course may look like, the students taking the course, and then they surveyed fire training academies around the northern Virginia region with the help of the Virginia Department of Fire Programs and the support from Culpeper County Volunteer Fire Rescue Association.
I think the support from top level, from the school board down to the principals, down to the instructor, has certainly made a difference in this program. There's, there's a lot of interest, there's a lot of wanting this to be successful, and we are certainly working with the schools to make this happen.
In the spring of 2024, launching a fire program in the division without a professional fire station seemed almost impossible. The challenges for many, the obstacles daunting.
Some complexities of establishing a new firefighter program were equipment purchasing, personal protective gear purchasing.
Air packs. They're fifteen thousand dollars apiece, but through our connections, we were able to acquire some air packs that were being replaced in another jurisdiction. And through that, we were able to supply the school with their own air packs, and we continually support them. Through, whenever needed, we fill the air bottles throughout the, throughout the school year. Apparatus, anything from a tanker to an engine to a ladder truck, whatever, whatever the class needed, we were there to supply it.
We didn't just imagine it, we brought it to life. January twenty-fifth, 2025 marked the culmination of this journey. The Fire One Burn, a powerful moment when the heart of our program, our collaboration with the community, was on full display.
Students experienced a real-world fire, but in a controlled environment that bridges the gap between theory and practice.
We combined the local volunteer academy, that's at evenings and weekends. We, we added the CTEC program, and we also partnered with Louisa's High School program.
This is the ultimate stress inoculation exercise that accurately depicts the proper planning and execution of a real-world fire response.
Working together was something that was really, really good to see. I saw a lot of tired firefighters, but they were, they all had big smiles.
This event wasn't just a success for our students, it was a testament to what can be achieved when a community comes together, united by purpose, and the shared goal of making a difference.
I hope I can uphold the high standard of professionalism that our instructors placed upon us when I go into the service or academy. I think that's one of the most important things a firefighter can do.
The CTEC fire program has brought out something different to me that I really enjoy, and I want to pursue my.
This is the impact of Culpeper CTE, where dreams are ignited and futures are forged in the flames of community and collaboration.
So all of this could not have been possible without the great working relationships with the school, the volunteers, and even at the state level. I do feel that going forward, that we will certainly work in whatever capacity the school system needs to help us, to help you, to make this a success.
Thank you for that. I'd like to take a moment to introduce a couple of young men behind me here. We have a couple of our recruits that would like to share a little bit about their journey, a little bit about their experience, not only as students, but also as local volunteers in the community.
Hello. My name is Camden Scarfo. I'm a senior over at Eastonview High School, and I am a part of the firefighting class over at CTEC. I'm thankful for this opportunity to speak on behalf of my class. I first would like to thank you for all your support and everything that you've provided for us. Thank you for approving this class to make it a true reality. This class has taught us all the essential needs of being a, to be in a career for firefighting. Not only have we grown our understanding of being a professional firefighter, but we have also developed our character as young men throughout this year. We have learned the importance of integrity in the field and to be honest with what we do. Whatever we do in the dark will always come to the light. This class has connected us together throughout the year, and we learned how to work together in everything we do, whatever task we are given. This class truly sets itself apart from all the other classes because of how close these connections are. I'm more than grateful to be a part of this program, and I'm thankful for our principal, Mrs. Summerscales, for allowing me to be a part of it. And I'm also thankful for each instructor and their dedication and commitment that they give to this class. Their commitment and dedication that they've given and their strength in leadership and hard work is what makes us the best.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Landon Walton. I'm from CCHS, and I'm also a senior in the fire class. Tonight, I want to speak kind of saying a little bit of what he said, but I want to thank you all for everything and giving us this opportunity. And I want to kind of just touch a little bit on how this has like shaped all of us into who we are starting to become. With us all doing these activities together with each other and everything, it shows us our strengths, our weaknesses, and what we need to practice on. It's also created the best friendships you could possibly ask for, and it just, it shows you who you need to become and what you want to have a drive for. I want to thank you all for giving us the opportunity to kind of pursue what we want to do in the future, and it really helps with that by giving us this, and giving this to us at CTEC. So I want to thank everyone and our principal and our teachers. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you, boys. I'd also like to take the opportunity to introduce our lead instructor, Mr. Jordan Dillon, who's done an incredible job of helping to bring all this to fruition. Mr. Dillon?
I, distinguished member of the school board, Dr. Bradz. Thank you. I guess I have nothing else. There, right there. Thank you.
It's been an amazing journey in just a year to really see all of this take place. Mr. Dillon and I spoke at length when he first came on board in our empty classroom. Actually, it wasn't empty, it was a nursing classroom that we were flipping over. And Mr. Dillon and I reflected mainly on what we thought would be the most impactful, which was somewhat of the fraternity that would exist amongst our students. And so seeing that really come to fruition with an unbelievable group of our first young men to become our, our future firefighters here has been unbelievable. I'd also like to commend them. They also, they did their hazmat certification exam on Saturday, which is one of the most difficult certifications that's given, period. All of them hundred percent passed the practical portion of their exam and are looking forward to hearing the results of the theory portion of the exam, which will be coming back soon. Finally, I'd also like to take this opportunity to give a special thank you, a very special thank you, to the Culpeper Volunteer Fire and Rescue Association, whose president is here this evening. Chief Junior Perryman. Chief Perryman, along with Chief Stewart, our Division Two chief, spent lots of time with me, teaching me what we needed, where our blind spots were, and then nonstop throughout, anytime we need them, they're there. It's not uncommon to see any one of them in our school building, just observing class or there with an apparatus or filling oxygen bottles for our students, breathing apparatus bottles for our students. It's been incredible to really see when our school division leads, our community is very willing to step in and support us in every way possible. So Chief Perryman, thank you so much for your unwavering support, and we very much look forward to years of continued collaboration and success. Thank you.
Any comments from board members?
I just, I just happened to notice there are two other students in the audience. Can we recognize those two students as well?
Go ahead, boys. Ryan Batson and Dylan C. So I'll say a little bit about them too, while I have these students up here. Every single one of these students started in a different CTEC class. Two in culinary arts, two in drafting. Dylan is actually our first three-time Blazer of the Month in three different programs, which includes our EMT program last year and then our fire program this year as well. So he keeps telling me I need to get him his T-shirt or hat or something. Keep telling him it's coming. So, yeah. Thank you.
Mr. Summerscales, how many students are in the program?
Currently, there's eight students in our inaugural program, but we just did complete registration. We had over thirty applicants for ten available seats for next year. So the secret's out. It's a, it's a great program, and we're really looking forward to seeing our new students come through.
And I'm curious, for these young men, how many of you intend to pursue this as a career or as a volunteer?
I do, ma'am.
Career? All of you? That's awesome. That's amazing. There's definitely a need with the growing community, the need for these services grows as well. So thank you. Thank you for putting your, having those plans to move forward with this. We appreciate your support for the community. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you, and I want to thank the students for representing the way you did. It is obvious that you are excited about the program and invested in the program, and that actually gives us a lot of comfort for moving forward too. We're going to be safe. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Pearson?
I just want to say also, as everyone else is saying thank you, but also to Captain Perryman and Mr. Dillon and all of you students and Mr. Summerscales, what a synergistic effect to benefit everyone. So, well done, gentlemen, well done.
Ms. Baker?
Just thank you for coming out tonight and speaking with us, and you're all heroes, always. All of our firemen are. Thank you so much.
I would like to say that this is kind of what makes Culpeper Culpeper. People ask those questions. But when you look at, you had the ability to feel comfortable with going down this road. Your bosses had trust in you that you were taking us down a good road. All of us saw the benefit that was needed, but things cost money. So, you know, you have to kind of be very frugal with it if you're in Culpeper. I'll say that. Having the people who live here support and help, all, you know, you go back to the art and making the designs, you go to this and people step up. And that really is, when all the things you see about schools in the newspaper make you want to stop reading newspapers, these are the kinds of things, that is what we are supposed to be about. And so I think, I speak for the board, when we're ecstatic that this has come the way it has come, and we recognize it's because of the people that are in place, that we get to sit back and say, cool, that's great, my, if you don't get affected by that video, something's wrong with you. So thank you, thank the support of our firefighters in our community. They are an awesome bunch, always have been. I can't imagine they wouldn't always be, but what a way, other school systems ask us, how do you do this? I mean, how do you get, it's just being open, honest, and moving forward? So thank you very much. Dr. Bradz? Dr. Bradz?
Mr. Summer Scales, you mentioned that this course allows for 10 slots, correct?
Correct.
So, please understand that these are limited and now coveted slots.
Yes, sir.
And I'll use a term that's in Career and Technical Education is non-traditional. And I don't, I do not know, sir, what's non-traditional and traditional with respect to the fire program. But as, as I sit up here with these ladies, do you understand where I'm going with this line of inquiry, sir? What is your applicant pool looking like?
Quite diverse. We have three students who are female students that are lined up for a course next year. So, you mentioned needing some, some gear at some point. We'll be purchasing some new uniforms. As you can imagine, some of that turnout gear that these boys wear won't necessarily fit our new recruits, but yes, a very diverse group for our upcoming.
You need to look that way, over there for.
Sir.
Thank you for indulging me on that.
Yes, sir.
Great, great job. Great job with the exposure of this program and the interest that it's created amongst our students and our families and our community. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right, we are up to the operations report with Dr. O'Brien.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Dr. Bradz, I'm happy to give the Operations Department report for March. Shirley is looking at February. I could tell you it's a tough act to follow, but I think I'm going to talk about butternut squash, so you should be excited about that. Maybe? I got you. Oops, there we go. It wasn't on. How about that? All right. First, I'm going to talk a little bit about spring cleaning. It's that time of year. I try to wear some springy colors so we all feel better about the temperatures and so part of the job is getting out and removal of some dead limbs, as you see happening at Pearl Sample with our bucket truck getting put to good use. You can also see our work orders for January with our Facility and Maintenance Crew. They completed 318 and received 355. They did clean out the chiller at CMS. Doesn't look like a very fun job to have, but I know they did a great job in prepping it because that's part of what we need to do to make sure that HVAC system is working good, chiller system's working good when we get to the hotter days. And some more look at that of them blowing out the actual, I've got some of the pipes on the backside of it. We did remove the stadium blanket that kept it insulated throughout the winter and you could tell if you've been and you've looked at the stadiums, that grass is already looking green. So it's looking really good that it did well over the very cold winter. And our maintenance folks repaired a walk-in freezer over at Farmington. Looks like part of the compressor was on the outside of the building. And back to our meal counts, I know that, that Niels already spoke a little bit about where we were, but you can see our numbers are down, but at the same time, February was also only 16 days. So I kind of expected our counts to be down because we weren't in school near as much and we did miss some breakfast. There we are with our CEP percentage, as you could see. And there's our wondrous butternut squash and mac and cheese. They set that up, come on. You know, kids are going to be like, "Mac and cheese, all right. What, what'd you add to it? Don't worry about that, just enjoy it." But, but the point is, we're encouraging kids that there's other ways that you can, you can eat some good food for you and cheese never makes it bad. Taste that. Yeah, try without the mac and cheese. So there's technology, you see the number of desk calls we had in our work orders. Been working on safety walks at Emerald, at Emerald Hill, Farmington, all of the elementary schools we get around. And we also worked on making the PA work a bit better at CCHS because some of the announcements couldn't be heard in the gym, so we've corrected that. Transportation, we did get the other set of charging stations for down at the bus shop. So we have two of the big stand-up ones that are going to be going at CTEC that are going to be solar powered and then we have the two smaller ones that will be connected to the other transformer down at the bus yard where we already have the two chargers for our other two electric buses. There's our stop armed camera violations. Interesting enough, our, our rates are up, but so are our actual approval rates. So that's been a change. So I, I think hopefully folks are learning their lesson, but at the same time, the approval rate's showing that they aren't. So it's, it's just one of those things. Here's our routing, what we've done so far. Back on that, where the citations are, same places as always. We've had some conversations about that and we have reached out to law enforcement as well and talked about, are there any things else that we could possibly do? There's a little bit of confusion about the curbing and, and I think it just unfortunately is the nature of where some of these tickets are happening. Morning ridership, you could, again, I know Dr. Bradz mentioned this last time about how high our ridership is. You can see it's almost 75% in the morning and more than 75% in the afternoon. Now granted, once we get into spring sports, we'll see it start to trickle down a little bit in the afternoon. I did add a new indicator, we had 156 field trips back in February. And remember, how many days was that again? 16 days. So we're doing a lot. We're traveling a lot up and down and we have a lot of mid-days as well. And our Stopfire, Stop Finder subscribers are still going up, which is good to see. We have reached out to the vendor, we've had some issues and they're very responsive and I actually have parents who email me directly, like, "My app's not working." And then about 10 minutes later, "It's working now." So it's, it's good to see some things happening. We do have three aides that actually are finishing up on training and will actually be drivers. So that's, that's a big pull for us to actually nurture those that are already in transportation, already understand the process, already knows what it's like to be on a bus, to make that decision to move up into a driver role. We're also looking forward to the job fair in April and we do have the Take It For A Spin event coming up this Friday at Eastern View where we've had folks within the school division sign up to come out and put their hands on, on the wheels of a bus and go round and round the Eastern View parking lot. So we'll see how that goes, but we're excited by it. Any questions?
I can't.
Are you going to come? You're going to try?
No, I cannot.
No, just. A second.
I forget to turn the car lights off.
Somebody has some doubts, so.
All right, are there any questions, discussion, comments anyone would like to make? Anybody?
Welcome back, we missed you. Dr. Bradz doesn't do justice to your slides, that's all I'm saying.
I don't, I don't know what to say. It's the butternut squash, I know. I saved that for this presentation, you know, it's, it's smart, strategy.
All right, anybody else? All good? Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
All right, now it is time for board member comments. I've been trying to remember who goes next in the list and I believe Ms. Baker, this is your month to start first.
I thought last month was my month.
Was it?
I'm not sure. Well, anyway, I'll just do it. I think tonight's presentations were amazing. I think the fire presentation was outstanding and Dr. Sataholm's kids were not only informative but very entertaining. They were a great group of kids, I think. And I would like to just take a minute to thank, Yale Elementary School had their literacy night on March 6th and Ms. Fiskus invited me with Kelsey Noel, the reading specialist, had me to come and just talk a little bit about writing a book because I have, I wrote a book or two. So I was, I just wanted to say that they were the most wonderful children. It was packed and the parents were wonderful and I would like to thank Mrs. Pratt for being a great hostess in the music room. I had a great time and I look forward to going to AG on March 25th. I think you, all the schools are just so happy to be in and the kids are wonderful. Thank you so much for inviting me.
All right, Ms. Hutchins?
Okay, I never know which way you're going. I attended the festival band concerts for pre, for state assessment and all of the bands did a great job when it came to state assessment on Saturday. Congratulations to the students and the band directors and the parents who support those students. Also helped out at the Sycamore Park Book Fair, kindergarten first and second. My hat goes off to those teachers. I think students today have far shorter attention spans than they used to. They don't sit still. And I've heard many positive comments from parents for the rising sixth grader orientation at both middle schools as to how that went. So congratulations to everyone who helped pull that off, so. Thank you very much. Ms. Smith?
It's been a fantastic night. I want to say thank you to the teachers who have given us 30 years of service and I appreciated the honor of the one that we sadly lost. The student athletes and the coaches and the involvement and the commitment that, that we see, the fine arts and the accolades there and the commitment. You know, our programs are successful largely because of the support and the excitement that the leaders have and we can't really overlook that. The student involvement from CCHS presentation and CTEC, thank you so much. It really was moving and we swell with pride, honestly, when we see what's going on. And I personally don't like strawberry milk, but my kids are going to be jealous that they didn't get it when they were in our schools, that's all I can say.
Ms. Desley?
I'm kind of a note taker and so whenever I'm listening to the presentations, I like to jot things down and later I think about what was said and also helps me remember people's names because I'm not good with names. But one of the things that I noticed this evening was, you know, we had something from the high school, we had something from CTEC, we had something showcasing the arts and across all of those, the words that came out from both the students and the staff presenting were teamwork, hard work, dedication, community, sense of belonging, and preparing for future. And it's really what school's all about and what our community's about and it was just a great night to hear all of that and especially from the kids. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Burnett?
I was trying to think of how to word this, but in watching all the presentations, one thing that I wanted to convey to the audience is that a lot of times when you're doing training for one aspect of life, you find that later on, that might come back and help you with another aspect of life. I've seen that happen so many times. My son, for instance, was an internationally certified commercial diver and once he changed professions to Border Patrol in the middle of the desert, he didn't think he'd have a use for the diving anymore. And just so happened that he ended up getting a promotion because he had had that experience and ended up being on boats on the Rio Grande River in Texas. But another, you know, I noticed that when you were giving the presentation, that Summers, Mr. Summer Scales, that, that you had several of your students were taking several classes and I think that's only going to benefit them in the future. And I started thinking, you know, with the firefighters, maybe they could eventually work or go to school for Coast Guard Academy or something like that and use that training, but, you know, in different fields and different aspects. So that, that was wonderful to see and also came to mind that my late husband went to high school with Sandra Bullock and I love her and Miss Congeniality and it actually brings out, when I go through their yearbook, she was in German, the German Honor Society. She was a cheerleader. She was in the theater department, but she never had a starring role. She always had supporting roles in her theater productions. And so it's amazing to see her become such a famous personality and how all of these different things actually has helped her in her career. And this is what I see for our students because our students are able to be exposed to so many different, you know, how do I say, course studies like, you know, the arts, the music, the band, CTEC. We're, we're just so lucky to have all of that and to have the community's support in all that we do and provide for our students. And I want to thank you all very much for that. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Ms. Spears?
Thank you. Just a few little shout-outs as I normally do. Shrek was awesome at CCHS, if you got to see that. The strong performances, awesome band, costumes were great. It was, it was a very, very nice show. Sycamore Park had a great fine arts festival. There were a lot of students reading their creative writing and singing and performing to a full house in the gym and that was, that was another great event. Farmington had an awesome family steam night. Ms. Nicholson and Mr. Glick and all the teachers are to be commended for not only coming up with a variety of interesting new events, but also handing out some Title I books. Everybody went home with a book from the fair, so that was another great thing. Also, I went to the EVH and Floyd T. Benz Band Concerts Festival, Band Concerts, and those are like dress rehearsals for the, the festival. And so I would have given them all a five, superior rating. I don't know how they did on Saturday, but they, they did well in my book. Just a little reminder about the art show this weekend, please come and see the art show, but also the Maker Energy Fair. It's a busy weekend here in Culpeper. And one month ago, we were dealing with a lot of snow, in case you have lost that in your memory. And in two months, we'll be dealing probably with graduation and the end of the school year. So it kind of, it's that long stretch now with daylight saving time where we have a little more light in the evening, but lots of things to do and to take up that time. So we're, we're in the, in the far turn coming into the home stretch, so I wanted to say everybody have a great, great Easter break that'll come up soon and thank you for all your hard work on behalf of our students.
All right.
I, I just wanted to make another announcement about the job fair. Again, that is April 5th from 9:00 AM to noon at our Career and Technical Education Center. Is that correct?
I think that they were talking about the student job fair.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. Well, this is also.
Don't you can go ahead.
Yes. I'll plug, I'll plug this for the Human Resources Department. Oh, well, I, I knew this was for regular jobs, teacher jobs, teacher positions and whatnot, but I just want to make sure somebody mentioned that there was the job fair April 5th, 9:00 AM to noon at the Career and Technical Education Center. Thank you.
All right, other, I have no comments, I've already talked enough. Other things that are supposed to be gone over, summary of the committee reports are online. Membership Employee Appreciation Week is Technology, March 3rd through the 7th. Employee Appreciation Week for volunteers is April 21st to 25th. Employee Appreciation Week Administration Professionals is 21 to 25 of April. The Capital Planning Committee meeting, March 12th at the school board office at 8:30. The C, Culpeper County School Board Administrative Committee, March 25th at the school board office at 8:30 AM. The Business Work Session, March 24th at the school board office for the school board. The Finance Committee will meet again at the next monthly meeting on April 7th, as will the board on April 7th. And it will include the Classified Employees of the Year at that meeting. So with that, is there a motion to go into closed session?
I move that the school board convene a closed session at 7:48 PM to consider the following personnel matters pursuant to the Code of Virginia 2.2-3711A1. The appointment of certified personnel, the appointment of classified personnel, the transfer of certified personnel, the approval of hourly Title I translators and interpreters, the separation of certified personnel, the separation of classified personnel, the separation of instructional supplement for the 2024-2025 school year, the approval of instructional supplement for the 2024-2025 school year, the approval of substitutes for the 2024-2025 school year, the approval of 2024-2025 amended spring coaching supplements for CCHS and the approval of 2024-2025 amended spring coaching supplements for EVHS.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Baker. Any discussion? Hearing none, we will vote. Is, is there, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Five-minute break, seven oh.
Oh my gosh, find a heater.